This conference will now be recorded.
So I just want to thank my chaplain, the city's chaplain. He's been definitely been a chaplain for four years. And I tell you, I really appreciate it. It's meant a lot to us and myself. And I want to say one more thing. Steve, Liz and I, Councilman Liz, have been discussing fundraisers for the Ukrainians. And we agreed that he's going to try to get together a campaign for donations and run it through the Red Cross. So he's going to be working on that, put a plan together. And I think it'd be very meaningful. We can have it, you know, he can do it for the city's stability or whatever.
Well, I'll be glad to, but I want to hear the council and see if they will get in touch with the Red Cross and go from there. But I don't want to start until everybody says go get them.
Do you have any agreement here?
Yes, yes.
You've got it.
I mean, I.
We don't have to have a formal vote.
I understand.
Okay. Chaplain?
Would you stand as able and join me as we have our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance. The Soudalia City Council, Mayor, Administrator and Staff need to discuss and make decisions for the benefit of this community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication as they perform their duties for us. We ask your protection for all first responders, police, fire, sheriff, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staffs, and all who work tirelessly to serve and protect us, often at the peril of their own well-being. We are grateful for the United States of America, a constitutional republic of which so many military and civilians fought and died to create and protect for 245 years. We ask your protection for all of the current military and civilian posted throughout the world and in this country to help keep this free society while it's being assaulted from without and sadly, from within. We have a special prayer for the Ukraine and its people who are suffering terribly under the situation of invasion and destruction. And now as we leave this evening, we ask your protection for us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. All of us, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
... which is the flag of the United States of America and the other republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pauline, welcome, please.
Lehman.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
And Bliss.
Here.
So now we're going to open a public hearing. And this process is only mandated for the sewer, UHP, and then every five years for the TIF. So for transparency sake, we're going to do the sewer, water and solid waste. And then we're going to do, we do it annually for the TIF. So we'll open this meeting. Anybody want to make a comment? Calvin is going to make a presentation on what this means in terms of the rates. And then we, I have one comment that one of our good friends wrote in and would like to, I'll read it.
Calvin? Okay. Well, thanks, sir. As Mayor pointed out, this is the time set aside for anybody from the public to make comments directly to council about the proposed utility rate. And as we've went through on the budget and just to summarize here again, the publication that went out, the proposed rates that are built into the budget to make the budgets balanced for each of these utilities are the sewer rates are slated to increase 10%, which for the average residential customer is about $3.75 per month. The water rates are slated to increase 2%, which to the average residential customer is about 47 cents. The sanitation or solid waste disposal fees are slated to increase a dollar and a 50 per month. And then, but then offset partially with the senior citizens discount to increase from $2 to $3 per month. So the senior citizens would see a 50 cent increase on, per month on their trash service. I did a little math here to come up with the net overall increase is about a 7.2% increase when you average all of those out, or about $5.72 for the average residential customer or for the senior citizen, about $4.72. Brenda also has done some research on surrounding communities and light communities. And so I've reduced that to a graph here to kind of show you how we compare to communities around us and light communities. And I don't know how hard that is to read, but the total water, sewer and trash for Soudalia is about $89. The average of all those communities in this is, that's after the increase. And then the average for all of the other communities or all of the communities in this, in this basket, market basket, if you will, is about $99. And then, you know, many of those, I say many, some of them have, you know, outsourced or have sold their water departments or I don't think anybody has their sewer, but then many of them are using commercial trash folks. And, and so again, we're just, just trying to compare in total. As you can see, we're cheaper on water than, than most. One's a little cheaper than us on water. We're about mid-range on the sewer. And then we're low to mid-range on, on the trash as well. Also, the written comment that Mayor Katie had, had mentioned, we had a comment come in through our community engagement or our citizen engagement software from ComKate. And so since that's what this hearing's about is to get comments from the community, we wanted to record this into the minutes of the hearing that respectfully request the funding, one branding campaign, two retail recruitment, three neighborhood revitalization. Respectfully request looking in, in several other places where cuts can be made and thinning out departments before increasing user fees for trash, sewer and water. Respectfully submitted by Albert Ryan.
That is junior, by the way.
Yeah, but that's direct quote is what he put in. So I would have said. These are, I'd like to point out, these are enterprise funds. They have to be sustained through user fees. If you're taking money from your general fund or other funds in order to prop up in enterprise funds, that's an unsustainable course of action. Where that ends is with us selling that ability to privately held companies. And like, I think some people are going to do that. What do you think would happen to our sewer rate if we sold that to a private company? The rate would triple, the service would not have, that'd be disastrous. That's, I mean, you can't do that.
Your Honor, if I could comment, I, I thought about this quite a bit. And I am leading the council. But that being said, I think some of this falls on our shoulders. I think we're not doing a good job of communicating with our citizens in regards to, one, of how the funding is done, and number two, why we are in the position of where we're at with, with this enterprise fund that funds this particular area. Some things in the past, I'm a history buff in the first place, but if you go back and look at a few things, and I, and I put some of this on the council in previous and it's been long before our time, to be honest with you. Some of the council members would not raise rates just because they wanted to be re-elected or just because they would say, I'm not, I'm not for that. That to me is kind of short-sighted in the way that you handle the financial responsibility that we sit here as a council person to our citizens. That's one thing. And the other thing is, if you look at it, and Andrew has kind of brought that up here, that what happens, what's the alternative if we don't do this? And I'm going to stop there and come back to that. But another part of history, if you go back a few years when we had to do, we were forced into it by DNR to do $30 million bond for the sewer fixes that we had to do, stormwater. And how the rates went up, tripled, just like that. There was a council that shortly after that decided that they would incrementally bring these rates up. And that's what we've been doing here in the past, is we've incrementally brought these up to where we can get into the range. That also is going to bring us into today's world where we're sitting at, maybe looking at a, well, we are looking at having to replace the north plant in the Barren Nutriture for about $60 million, which is going to take another bond to do that. That's normally the way you handle that anyway, but you use the bond. And if we're not fiscally responsible in our enterprise money to where we can pay those bonds back, two things happen. We either won't get bonded. If that happens, I would assume that DNR will come after us and start to find us for not getting that job done. That will cost us and that money we never will ever recover. It'll probably become a lot of our reserve plans if we have to do that. That's part of that picture. So coming back to now, to where we're at today, the increments, we, all of us council people don't want to sit here and have to raise rates because you never have, never will. But there are certain things for services that they require, and citizens do require those services, we as a council need to be fiscally responsible for that. So what we're looking at is, is the increment rate, what we're doing right now, that's part of that picture. And looking forward to maybe we can fix this and get to that point where we're, we're there. And if you looked at that chart that you saw earlier, I hope it gets out to the press. I know the press is not here tonight. But if you look at that chart and see where we're sitting at for the rate, we're not that bad. Here again, on that chart, I see Warrensburg's up there and they have a privately held water company. Yeah. Company taking care of their water.
Yeah.
And those companies are actively seeking to purchase our utilities.
I know. I've been contacting this member's account. Mayor's office has been contacted. And, but that's going to, I mean, if that happens because we've been playing politics with rates, that's going to be disastrous.
You know, and I'll, I'll finish with one last thing in regards to the funding within a city or municipality. Majority of our funding comes from sales tax, pretty good majority of it. And yes, on, on the other side, looking forward to the future, the legislature has finally passed what we call the Wayfair Bill, which will allow us to put a tax, not us, but the state to put a tax on interstate sales, which is a tax that probably, which is a basic sales tax, should have happened years ago, but it didn't. And that affects the income for municipalities. Took us a while to get there, but that finally happened. But that effect for us won't happen for two to three years till finally it's in place. Here again, that's into the general fund, not this enterprise fund. And you can co-mingle some funds within city finances, some you can't. Some you can cross, but you can't bring it back. So if we could figure out a way to better inform our constituents, the people we work for really, as to how this is all done, and we don't come to this conclusion lightly, and you never want to do it, but service costs will, it's the nature of the beast. It's like everything else that happens and somehow it's got to be paid for. I have a fear if we go to a private funding, the rates will really go up. Where we here, we sit here, we haven't got any control over it. It'll be just a thing that happens and nobody will have any input to it.
It's interesting, Jeff, you can talk to the people living in Wall and Hills with their privatized sewer system.
There was, there was a system that was here recently, it was affected, I think DNR came after them in the, what's that?
Raccoon Creek?
Yeah. Well, what subdivision spending, that's.
Any other corners?
I guess, let me say, I, I've seen enough. We've worked at this. We're looking at a 7% increase across 7.02. That's what you would expect to see this year, looking at inflation. We've done a lot of hard work there. And I want to keep water, sewer and trash in the cities per view. I don't want an outside person doing it for another reason, it's the city employees that are so loyal and dedicated to us. I don't want to throw them over the half to deal with renegotiating their jobs and their contracts and things. I just don't guarantee that they would honor our city employees. So let's, I'm, I'm happy with percentage and I think it, you know, where we are on this chart speaks for itself. We've got solid services. We've been able to manage it. Let's, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think I, overall, the 7% increase is reasonable and we're dealing with all the inflation. We're going to have to buy gas. We're going to have to keep our employees and we've gone through a lot of the budgeting process to put that together, so.
And, and I'm hearing what Jeff is saying, I'm hearing what Andrew's saying, and, and I get it, but I also strongly agree with Jeff that we need to be letting the individuals or letting the citizens understand and know there are some pots of money that you can move, move things around in, and then there's some pots of money that you just can't. You have to use it for that. And I think that we didn't do a very good job of getting that information out because as I, I had asked Kelvin, our city administrator, I'm like, okay, so is this, which was asking me, is this $5 and something per month? Is this $5 and something per usage? What is it? So it really didn't get explained to the citizens to where they're like, oh, okay, so you're only going to add $5 a month to my bill?
To the three bills, right? Wasn't that three bills?
Combined.
The combined total is 572.
So your monthly water, sewer and trash is going to be, I think you're looking for it. There it is, 572 or 472.
Right.
If you take advantage of the senior discount. And I think another thing we need to do is make sure all the seniors know how to apply for and receive that senior discount.
And, and that's great that you're doing that for the seniors, but what about our low-income families?
Yeah.
You know, they, they need something as well.
That would lead to segmented pricing, which you could base on volume, income, age. That would be something good that would be, that we could explore in the Public Works Council, explore that segmented pricing and maybe that's the way, the way we can address the needs of people that don't have a lot or can't afford it.
That, that's my biggest concern, those that are low-income and can't afford it. I mean, to some people, they're like, come on, $5. Well, you know, $5 to some folks is a lot of money. It's a lot of money. So if you're barely getting by as it is, and now you're saying, okay, for your normal everyday trash, sewer, water, you got to use it every day. So now you're saying for that, we've got to add some, and, and it's sad that it didn't get done when it should have gotten done way back when, but we can't, we can't repair way back when. We got to go forward. But I, I stand for the low-income and for our seniors in saying, we, we've got to figure something out here.
Another small aspect to it is the solar power project we've undertaken last year. You know, and in the future, we're going to be able to see, see the comeback on that investment and that, that's going to reflect towards our taxpayers.
You know, I, you know, I'm not going to paint this rose, a couple of glasses, but the reality is, it's going to continue to be increased annually and we're going to be faced with ever-increasing inflation costs this year. And that's just the reality. So we, somehow, you know, I don't, we can, and if we, we don't get an handle on it and if we go with the private decision, it's really a shot with these people, because we have no control.
You know, I'll add one more thing and then I'll ask if we, if we want to, if there's no public input yet. Is there anybody out here that needs to have one public input? That being said, that's, that's another part of, I think it needs to be known, and I think it is known, at least I hope it's known, that this council has opened a discussion from the public. You know, we've, we've moved away from having the, the first session upstairs and downstairs and where we're open and we've always had that little three-minute limit, but we've let that go. We've kind of let it to listen to everybody when they have come and talked to us. And tonight is the, is the hearing on this and there's nobody here. And, you know, we've had once-a-two conversations with certain constituents, and it's once-a-two. But on the. The previous budgeting sessions, that, that's correct, have been open, so, and that, and that's correct. And we'll return but try and do the best for them. And I think that's regretted. That being said, Your Honor, with nobody being here, I motionably close this hearing.
I'll take the motion. We'll open that second, that second hearing on the budget. This is something that's not mandated, but we think by transparency, we want to discuss this with the community we're talking to. So I'm going to turn it back over to Governor.
Yes. Again, as Mayor Katie had indicated, this is not a requirement, but we've started this several years ago just to try to engage citizens more and in the spirit of transparency and, and complete openness, we asked the community if they want to come and speak directly to council on the, on the budget before we adopted. You know, as, as we mentioned, the all-open meetings are open meeting. There's been a lot of discussion on the budget leading up to it, starting way back when, when we started the strategic planning process from each, each department and those kinds of things. So if there's anybody in the community that wants to come forward and, and express any kind of desires, any kind of input whatsoever into the budget directly to council before they make their decision later in the meeting.
Anybody in the council, if you want to have any comments? Anybody want to make comments to the council? Thank you. Now we'll go on to the third segment. John Simmons has all the information relating to the TIF district.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give you an annual update on the West 50 TIF as well as the Midtown TIF, which is the downtown TIF. Correct. There's a, there's a, there's a requirement that every five years a public hearing be held. We do it every year so that we make sure we don't miss that five-year requirement. And it's also a good way to keep the public informed on, on what the benefits of the TIFs have been to the city and its residents. And if you'll recall, on the West 50 TIF, it was adopted in 2015 with an amendment back in 2019 to the terms. And this is the TIF that contains Big O Tire, Aspen Dental and Scooters. There is remaining land to develop on West 50, west of the Big O Tire store, as well as at Westwood and 50 Highway on the southeast corner of that intersection. There's still healthy interest in the parcels and the assessed valuation added to the redevelopment project at this point. And at this point, it's actually in November 2021, we file an annual report with the state. I'm giving you the figures that we file with that annual report every year. The assessed valuation added at that time was charted at $402,630. I'm not sure if that has the Big O building in it yet, but we'll check on that. If you have any questions on the West 50 TIF, I'll take those now because now I'm going to move into Midtown. Okay, on the Midtown TIF, this was a, an agreement that dated back to 2015, I want to say, when we created that TIF, or was it earlier? No, it was 2008. 2008. We amended that agreement in July of 2018 to add the Lamy Building project to the district. And that project was paid back from revenues from the Lamy property only. So those improvements over on Pacific Street came from the project itself and the increased valuation and sales tax that comes from that. The street construction was actually completed under a separate sales tax agreement with the Lamy property. Up to date, we also completed the trust building portion of the city's redevelopment on that project. And if you'll recall, that was stabilizing the north wall and weatherproofing the structure so it could get into a developer's hands. The Broadway Arms was demolished on, on Broadway and Lamine. And Streetscape Phase 3B was completed to finish out Ohio Street. Liberty Center, we've been in contact with them lately. They've done many of their projects that were on the required list prior to us acknowledging their receipts and reimbursing their project. We'll be receiving those receipts soon. And then on the Uptown Theater, there's been no action at, at this time yet. In the past year, we saw new businesses at the Lamy Building. APS Solutions went in. We also saw New York Deli start business on Osage, Thriving Financial on West Third Street, and then Katy Trail Health Center has opened up. The assessed valuation added to the district since its inception has been $3,959,170. And the pilots, which are the payments in lieu of taxes in the district, since its inception have amounted to $1,211,551. So the, the life of the Midtown TIF goes through 2031, I believe. So the time is on us. It, it's strange to believe that the, we're on the back end of this TIF.
Any questions, council? John, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have changed, we'll, we'll, on the agenda, I, I'll say this now, we have changed the agenda to see if we're going to have community development be the number one before finance administration, but we need to get a approval for the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Ballot paper?
Aye.
Pose. Community development?
Okay, so, let me get down here to my agenda. The ordinance you have, the four years, an agreement between City of Soudalia and Missouri Main Street Connection, it's for participation in the marketing heritage and cultural tourism and rural Missouri program.
So I'm going to let Downtown Mayor, Downtown, especially City Mayor, fore and I go ahead and take the spirit with us because you've got some exciting developments regarding that. And then she's also got, as we said, the artist spirit that's going to be, and so it's going to be popular.
So one of the things I really love about my job is the fact that when you get more than one person into a, a discussion, it's amazing what comes from that. And so you, as city council, had already talked about that you wanted to see more alley activation for the public safety part of it as far as pedestrians, because some of our alleyways are a little rough roads. We have to watch as far as the, the, the surface of the alleyways because of people walking there, and also about being able to do some lighting in there. So when people are utilizing those alleyways, they can feel safe and they're being able to go from some of our city parking lots to the downtown businesses. And so with talking with Julie and Harry Hopper, they were very excited about the fact that we have go ahead and hopefully designate that first alley between 209 South Ohio and 211 South Ohio as the first alley activation. And so with that, Brenda's going to be working with getting asphalt put in there. We will probably be doing asphalt in most of the alleyways because we still have to, even though we're making them more attractive to be able to use them for place making, they still are where your utilities are located. So they still have to be able to have things that are movable to be able to get in and do work, but still be able to replace them to where we can start using them again. And so the asphalt will go in and we'll start looking at some attractive lighting to put down the alleyways. And the benefit of the downtown pavilion being there, some of that lighting we're hoping to mimic in that first alleyway. So if you could see in the brain, it's going to look really neat because you'll be able to see the lighting over at the downtown pavilion will continue on that alley. That alley is one of the most utilized alleys in the downtown area because of its venue. It is located just to the west, the south of there, and the other businesses. And that, it seems like so many times with the weddings downtown, the alleyways are already attractive to our wedding parties for pictures. And so we are going to be so able to do not only the safety portion of the alleys, but we're going to actually make it attractive on our first alley activation right off the bat. With that said, because of this Missouri Main Street training, there was an opportunity for a grant between Missouri Main Street, Missouri Humanities Council and the National Redemption for the Humanities. They were interested in locating 12 different communities that could use $5,000 on a project that would address some of the impacts that COVID-19 has had on places, asking, well, how did COVID-19 affect our community and what solutions we might be able to find on funding to kind of help bring back the businesses, bring the people out? And it was very interesting with researching the impact of COVID-19 found, like, for And it was very interesting with researching the impact of COVID-19 found, like, for instance, Bothwell Lodge. While they had to close the lodge for tours, they still had basically the same amount of people participating in the park system because people were still able to get out into open spaces, enjoy time and activities with their families. And similarly, with some of the activities that we were, once we were allowed to, if it was open air, public areas where people could feel comfortable about being able to space a little bit, those those things were able to continue a little bit more. And so that is one of the things with Missouri Main Street and with city councils. We want to look at doing more of that place making activities where the alley, yes, it is for utility, but it also can be the application and make it to where people actually want to hang out there. So we'll get this first alley done, and then we need to start brainstorming about different activities you can have in there to make it a place where people feel naturally that it's a place they hang out, have fun, and get the other ideas from other people when you start talking to find out what they'd like to see in there. So I did want to bring up Stephanie and Julie and Harry Hopper because without them, I mean, it's it's pretty neat when you already have a partnership pretty much formed before you go into the grant system. And so that was the thing with Stephanie and and Hopper, since they already, they were, they're the friendships and they had already talked about. If there was ever a chance to do a mural, they would like to have her do it. So it just naturally, once we started talking about it, Hopper said, if this does occur, we'd like to have Stephanie do it. Well, the neat thing about all this is the grant that is being applied for was $5,000. And with council's in-kind donation, we had $2,000. Well, with partnerships and friendships and people knowing each other, Stephanie reached out to Barbara and Robert Hayden, and they are matching that $10,000 with another $10,000. And so we now went from a $5,000 grant to a $20,000 investment in our first alley. And and while Mr. Hayden wasn't able to be here tonight, we did go ahead and do a photo shoot thanking them and Missouri Main Street, Missouri Humanities Council, and the National Endowment for the Humanities. Because one of the things with this grant is is we're going to do a whole marketing plan that will just kind of discuss what is going on with that alleyway, but also talk about the history of the building. And as you can tell, in this, the picture over here on Ohio Street, the second one is one of the color. That third building in on the left-hand side is actually Mr. Hopper's and Julie's building. And that was a three-story building at one time, especially over here too. And he has a history of, Mr. Lehman. So many of our Ohio downtown stores and stuff, there was quite a few of them that had the tour, it had the spires and that sort of thing. And they basically came down around the thirties during the depression because of the tax impact. And so that is one of the things that's going to be in the murals is we're going to depict that three-story building, and we'll talk about the building's history as we go along with it. So that we're moving forward, we're changing those alleys, and would they be surprising that we'll have people getting together and having activities and that kind of stuff? Because I'm I'm sure they were very utilitarian back at that time, but we're going to change it up just a little bit, so. Did you have any questions?
Any questions, council?
I just want to thank the Hayden's for their generous donations.
And I will say that with Mr. Hopper, he also, there's quite the possibility that we've got a lift that's going to be donated. And I think he's also got a secondary that doesn't pan out. And so he's got some several ideas about different financing and that stuff to do on his building. So to say that we're not all excited is very much so, so, you know, I think it would be a great thing. And and hopefully, this will just be a catalyst for more of this to occur. We'll get our first alleyway done and see what we can do with the rest of them down in the downtown area.
Excited, thank you. So Arlene, would you, any questions, council? So read the ordinance, please, Arlene.
Bill number 2022-36. An ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Missouri Main Street Connection Incorporated for participation in the Missouri Main Street Marketing Heritage and Cultural Tourism in Rural Missouri Program.
Second, second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-36. An ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Missouri Main Street Connection Incorporated for participation in the Missouri Main Street Marketing Heritage and Cultural Tourism in Rural Missouri Program.
Final passage.
Second. Call call please.
Bogus? Yeah, thank you. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yep.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Mr. Bliss, finance administration?
Uh, several things, I'm busy. The the first one is basically we've covered with regard to the, uh, let me get back to that back page, I guess. We've looked at all the utilities and talked about all those to determine if the fee structure and relationship to the cost of providing such utilities is sufficient to sustain the services. Increases necessary identified and published in a public notice at a hearing. This time it's set aside for the council to hear from the public, and that's what we just did. Later in the meeting, we will now consider, for approval, ordinances for the rates, and finally, adoption of a budget that increases these rates. The proposed rate increases are summarized as follows. Sewer rates are slated at 10%, which is about 3.75% per month for the average residential customer. Water rates are slated to increase 2%, which is about 47 cents per month for the average residential customer. And sanitation or solid waste disposal fees are slated to increase $1.50 per month to offset some of an increase in the senior citizen discount of a dollar. The net overall combined, did I, did I mess it up?
Yeah, you're on the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, gone it. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, we, let me, let me go back and because I was, the first thing is to adjust for the fiscal 2021, right? Okay, so I miss, I'm sorry. Each year is part of the budgeting process. For the upcoming year, we conduct a comprehensive review of all accounts for the current year. We then adjust the current year budget accordingly to ensure there's sufficient appropriations and transparency by formalizing a final budget amendment. And that's what we need to do first under my guidance. That's item number one. And we need a resolution first and then an ordinance.
So will you approve?
I'm sorry. She needs to read. I'll be in there after.
So what do you have, any questions? Resolution?
So so this is just to square things up for the end of the year.
Any questions?
Francis Lee.
Council? So, Arlene, go ahead and read the resolution, please.
Okay, resolution 1958. A resolution authorizing an increase in expenditures in the budget for the fiscal year 2122.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, any questions on the ordinance, council? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-37. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2022-37. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2122.
Final passage. Second.
Call call please.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, see if you change the the agenda on me, John.
I threw you off on that.
So the second thing is now those utility rate increases. They'll take three ordinances. We just had that discussion at the beginning of the meeting. We had, we conducted a public hearing on proposed utility rates, including the budget. These hearings are designed to garner public input on the proposed rates. None of us like to have increases. These rates are, in order to keep these services going, necessary to keep up with the rising costs and aging infrastructure. We've discussed during the budget, work sessions and presentations, the rate increases. As they are proposed, also as discussed during the budgeting process, each of these utilities are appropriately accounted for as a separate and distinct enterprise fund. This is done to ensure that rate payers and and not taxpayers are paying for the cost of providing the service to them while also ensuring they're not paying more than such cost is a hidden tax. While we request and appreciate the written comment for the hearings, the items specified in the request for cutting are not associated with utilities and thereby would not free up any funding to avoid these fee increases. After the public hearing, council can now consider these rates. So now we have three ordinances, I believe, mayor.
So, council, any discussion about the ordinances? Arlene, you want to read the ordinances?
Okay, so the first one is on sewer use charge. Bill number 2022-38. An ordinance amending section 60-219D of Article Five of Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the sewer use charge system and incorporating said fees into the city's fee schedule.
Second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-38. An ordinance amending section 60-219D of Article Five of Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the sewer use charge system and incorporating said fees into the city's fee schedule.
Final passage.
Second. Call call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Cross? So we have six yes and two no. Okay, the second ordinance is on the water use charges. Bill number 2022-39. An ordinance amending section 60-401 of Article Seven of Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the water use charge system and incorporating said fees into the city's fee schedule.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-39. An ordinance amending section 60-401 of Article Seven of Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the water use charge system and incorporating said fees into the city's fee schedule.
Second read, or final passage.
Second.
Call call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
No.
And Foster?
Yes.
We have six yes and two no. And the last one is increasing residential solid waste fees. Bill number 2022-40. An ordinance amending the fee schedule to increase residential solid waste collection fees.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
Bill number 2022-40. An ordinance amending the fee schedule to increase residential solid waste collection fees.
Final passage.
Second.
Call call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Bo- uh, Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
Six yes and two no.
Oh, then, we'll get back, we have to keep the score. Budget adoption. We will be, when we have, we, are we going to re- We will be able to review the summary budget worksheets again and make any final changes to the upcoming budget. Then after much work and deliberation, staff recommends adoption of the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So do the review, Arlene.
Okay. If anybody wants to revisit anything, I mean, I've got the same spreadsheet we've been working on. You know, I think the last meeting, I think we were pretty much in in agreement, at least what I was hearing as to where we were. But, you know, it's up to you all, if you all want to bring up anything else for more discussion or want to change anything. This is, this spreadsheet represents where we're at at this point in time. And I think if you're thinking of anything-
It was anything that, if we're looking at anything that matters to anything that the council has done over the years, are the percentages that are over on the right-hand side. You all understand what those percentages mean to us.
They're fund balance.
Percentage is right.
Okay.
Those are guidelines that we established years ago. And we're well within that and we're well within those guidelines. Yeah, that's awesome. You have to rebuild some roads, that's great. Brenda gets to drive it too. Well, I'll get that- It's like a Zamboni kind of, so she'll be great.
Tina, you have been, you look like you're studying.
Lot of money, I'm studying a lot of money, but yeah.
Any other questions, amendments? You know, obviously, this is, uh, probably the fifth time we've been over this. So, Councilman Bliss, should we go beyond this point? Ready to just?
I'm happy, read the ordinance.
Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-41. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year 2023.
Final, second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-41. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year 2023.
Final passage.
Second.
Call call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
Fourth item is the, as included in the proposed budget reviewed in the council work session, the contracted services for economic development through economic development of Sedalia Pettis County remains at $135,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance to approve the contract for fiscal year ending 3/31/2023.
Any council discussion?
Yes, I talked to Mr. Scholback, this is about how much the county pays. They, uh, we see more benefits than city, so they're only paying, what, $40,000?
We are the county.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm the county, see.
So what do you, what's your position?
I think, I think they should pay more than $40,000, don't you?
You think we, are you advocating we reduce our commitment?
No, we should stay where we're at. But I think the county should-
So we're gonna, we're gonna pay, we're gonna put you in charge of, well, we are the county. We are in the county.
Yeah.
You think the county commission should pay?
Yeah.
I would say, yeah. So we're gonna put you in charge of making that commitment to the county.
Okay, I agree with that.
Okay. Any other questions? Read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-42. An ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and economic development of Sedalia Pettis County.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-42. An ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and economic development of Sedalia Pettis County.
Final passage.
Second.
Call call please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
Scott Joplin is next. As included in the proposed budget and reviewed in the council work session, the contracted services for the Scott Joplin Ragtime Festival through the foundation is reinstated at $10,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance to approve the contract for the fiscal year ending 3/31/2023. And I look forward to seeing the Scott Joplin Festival use the new pavilion. I think it'll look great.
Yep.
Any questions, council? Orley, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-43, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Scott Joplin International Ragtime Foundation Incorporated.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-43, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Scott Joplin International Ragtime Foundation Incorporated.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yep.
All in favor?
I think I'm gonna say yes, yes, the rest of the night. It's okay, I get to turn the 90 second timer on there. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to speak over you, but I just thought, what'd he say? I said, I get to turn the 90 second timer on there. That was pressure and I kinda halfway got through that, right? Um, sixth is a rather routine, no, sixth item, Mayor, is a rather routine housekeeping item, finance department has submitted a request for approval of the destruction of certain records that have met the retention requirement.
Motion to approve. Any resolution, please?
It just needs a motion and a second.
It just needs a motion to approve.
And a second, yeah.
And a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you. My seventh item, uh, the firewall system. The city's computer networks rely heavily on firewall technology for cybersecurity. As with most, and we know Russia's gonna be getting after it here in a minute, as with most networking solutions, there are many different products on the market with huge variances in features and related costs. Our IT staff has reviewed the market and determined that the system from SOCO's best suits our needs with reasonable price. Once you find a particular system, keeping a consistency across all segments of the network reduces variability and thereby increases reliability and efficiency. Over the last 15 years, as our network has grown in size and complexity, we've been able to scale our firewall solutions through the use of SOCO's products. With ever increasing cybersecurity threats, they have deployed a new generation of products that make a more holistic approach by integrating antivirus software and hardware, including wireless access points. Um, as it is time to renew our license, the vendor has proposed a deal to upgrade us to the next generation of products. The new generation products were deployed in the building of the Hecker Community Center Systems and staff was well pleased with its performance. To move the rest of the network would require upgrading or replacing all of our firewall hardware devices. So they have offered promotional pricing that will include the hardware at no cost if we agree to a three-year licensing and support agreement. Staff recommends approval of the purchase licensing and support agreement for our firewall technology in the amount of $41,939.66. In order to keep this pricing, the order will have to be placed prior to March 31st, but will not be delivered until next fiscal year. Therefore, this purchase will affect the budget for the next fiscal year. And my recollection as we talked about this with...
Any questions in that next question?
About the ordinance, council, what I hear over your crossing, which is, was 500, I mean, it was pretty nominal.
Okay.
It was, I, I, I wanna say in his memo, I think he said 500 and $1,000, or numbers to that. It's SOCO's system that we are using is one of the best in the world.
Any other questions, council? Orley, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-44, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Blue Tree Technology LLC for the purchase of firewall support licensing and wireless access points.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-44, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Blue Tree Technology LLC for the purchase of firewall support licensing and wireless access points.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Yes. Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Public Safety Chairwoman Tina Bogus.
Um, there's one item for consideration through the Public Safety Committee tonight. As a rather routine housekeeping item, the Police Department Administrative Support Bureau has submitted a request for approval of the destruction of certain records that have met the retention requirement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Public Works, Thomas.
First item I have tonight is we need to replace the return activated sludge pump for our central plant. This pump removes nutrients from the wastewater to produce a high-quality liquid waste. We are going to award this bid to FTC Equipment for $28,780.
Any discussion, council? Read the ordinance, please, Orley.
Bill number 2022-45, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with FTC Equipment LLC for the replacement of a return activated sludge pump at the Central Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-45, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with FTC Equipment LLC for the replacement of a return activated sludge pump at the Central Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yep.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
The second item I have tonight, the area west of Cambridge Drive and Highway B is continuing to be developed, so we need to extend water services, services to the recently annexed area. Uh, we're going to award this bid to B&amp;P Excavating for $22,499.46.
Any discussion, council?
So on the, uh, bid sheet, there's a handwritten note says, uh, B&amp;P Excavating will not be responsible for the relocation of existing electrical primary if it interferes with the connection to existing valve. Is it going to, do you know, have any knowledge if it's gonna interfere with the connect, uh? Yeah. Okay.
It's something that we would make a field adjustment for.
Yeah.
Which is likely a relocation. Okay.
Any other discussion, council? Read the ordinance, please, Orley.
Bill number 2022-46, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for water main improvements on Cambridge Drive.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-46, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for water main improvements on Cambridge Drive.
Final passage.
Thank you.
Second. Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third item I have tonight is we have an annexation agreement with Alex Capitula for return for utility services. When his property becomes contiguous with the city limits, he will automatically be annexing with that. So we need a authorization of an annexation in the utility service agreement.
Any council discussion? Orley, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-47, an ordinance authorizing an annexation in utility services agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Alex Capitula Senior of Capital Construction Company LLC for connection property, of property located in Pettis County, Missouri to the city of Sedalia Sanitary Sewer and Water System.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-47, an ordinance authorizing an annexation in utility services agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Alex Capitula Senior of Capital Construction Company LLC for connection of property located in Pettis County, Missouri to the city of Sedalia Sanitary Sewer and Water System.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Fourth item I have tonight is a change order number one for the sidewalk repair replacement. In the previous council meeting, we made the decision to rehabilitate the sidewalk between Osage and Kentucky. We need to have a change order for $82,278.3. This change order will repair, replace the sidewalk as well, as well as infill the coal chute located in the alley going to stone laser imaging. That, of course, ties into the alley reactivation we decided to do as well. The majority of this cost is demolition, curb and gutter, and the coal chute repair and backfill.
Any council discussion?
I, I have one question just for clarification. Uh, these, what we're approving tonight on some of these under the budget, are they approved on the previous amendment, that first part? The final?
Uh, I'm pretty sure all of these will be next year. Yeah, 'cause by the time we, yeah, 'cause it's just, okay. By the time we get, uh, uh, through the approvals, and I get the notice to proceed, they're not gonna get started before, well, before 3/31. Okay, thank you.
Any, any ideas on how deep that coal chute was that you guys found?
There are three of the projects on Main Street.
Yeah.
And there is one in the alley. One, it's, the one in the alley is only about five feet deep.
Okay.
Including the foundation depth. And the one over on Main Street are at least six feet.
Wow. Huh, crazy to think that everybody's.
Well, we did one not too long ago there by coaches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Orley, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-48, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for sidewalk repair and replacement on Main Street between Osage Avenue and Kentucky Avenue and the infill of a coal chute located in the alley going to stone laser imaging.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-48, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for sidewalk repair and replacement on Main Street between Osage Avenue and Kentucky Avenue and the infill of a coal chute located in the alley going to stone laser imaging.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Towards the end of last year, might have been at the very beginning of this year, we approved the project 4A for the storm water management master plan. We need to approve construction easements to, uh, to complete this project. And as a reminder, this part, this part of the project is for Sevigny and Park.
Any council discussion?
What's going on there now? And that, we have a cast man.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I didn't think it was us, but I know there's work there now.
That's one of the, we have that Artesian well.
Are they, which, yeah, that's another, for another time. I don't wanna talk about the Artesian well. Let's, let's get home. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. 90 seconds.
Any other questions? Read the ordinance, please, Orley.
Bill number 2022-49, an ordinance accepting permanent and temporary construction easements relating to storm during each improvements project area 4A.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-49, an ordinance accepting permanent and temporary ease, construction easements relating to storm during each improvements project area 4A.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, and finally, we need to approve the scope of services for Wilson and Company. This will create a design for an addition of a right turn lane from Westwood Avenue to US 50.
Any discussion, council? Read the ordinance, Orley, please.
Bill number 2022-50, an ordinance authorizing a scope of services for design engineering services related to the addition of a right turn lane from Westwood Avenue to US Highway 50.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-50, an ordinance authorizing a scope of services for design engineering services related to the addition of a right turn lane from Westwood Avenue to US Highway 50.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Thank you. So Andrew, you wanna go through community development again?
I'm good.
Okay. Liquor licenses, Arlene, please.
Okay, we have two renewals this evening. Man Def Car doing business at Soudalia Senex sixty-six at one twenty East Sixteenth Street for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales license. And John Swearingen, uh, doing businesses, J.A. Laney Manufacturing Company at one oh eight West Pacific for liquor by the drink license.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Kelvin? Council, make any comments tonight?
Good to look at you.
Well, I'd just like to say that I thought the Hecker Community Center grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony was awesome. Um, I thank you for everyone that showed up, uh, to help us celebrate and, and just, uh, wanted to reiterate a thank you, Mayor, for all of the, the work that you did to make this happen. And, uh, and to all the council for sharing in the vision to, to finally make this thing a reality and the, and the trust and all of that to, to help put it forward. That's all I had.
I talked to Amy, and she said Thursday alone, there were three thousand and twelve